13th meeting of the Board of Supervisors and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And looking at the roll call, I'd see we have everyone here. Camilla is here. I see her name on the list and all the board members that we have of record and their alternates. The only thing we don't have is representation from the South Fork of Eagle River. Is there anybody out there listening that may be joining us from Eagle River South Fork tonight? Hearing none, I'll move on.
So I'm here from the South Fork. I'm Jessica Horwath.
Okay, Jessica Horwath. Okay.
Yeah, Jessica, I don't think has been officially appointed or elected, but she is in that council. And so I invited her to come and listen in and see if it might be a good fit.
All right, Jessica, well, welcome. Thanks for taking time to be with us tonight. I would like to move on then. Approval of minutes from November 8, 2021. We got them a little bit late. I reviewed them. I think many others may have had time to take a look at the minutes. I would, I would only add that I would like to maybe see page numbers on them. And I don't know whether that's something that'd be real hard to accomplish or not, but that's probably pretty easy. And do we have any, any comments on the minutes? Do we feel comfortable approving the minutes or shall we, since we got them late? Hold off on that. Everyone has a chance to look at them and perhaps do a email poll at some time, a day or two from now, or shall we proceed? Ruth Armstrong is waiting in the lobby. She will join us momentarily.
Hey Ruth, hey Ruth, did your sign on work better this time? You're on mute, huh? Ruth?
I see her there, but she's muted.
Yeah, Pete, I have not seen the minutes come through. I have the agenda, but I don't know if I missed it, missed the minutes.
They came out late this afternoon.
I, Pete, I sent them to you though, just to see if you had changes first before rolling out. So the rest have not seen them. So I can certainly forward to them now.
Well, let's, let's delay on the minutes. People haven't had a chance to take a look at them. So we'll come back to that and let me wrestle with getting the minutes approved sometime other than right now. So let's, let's delay the minutes. The next item is public comments. And I don't see anybody from the public out there that might be wanting to address the Board of Supervisors from, for, for agenda item we may not have, or want to introduce themselves and whatever. But is there anyone from the public that isn't a board supervisor or whatever that would like to address this? I don't see any names out there. I see John Rada has his hand up.
Yeah, please. Pete, would you confirm who is actually online right now?
I see John Rada, Josh Duran, Karen Richards, Will Tagan, Ruth Armstrong, Camilla Hussein, myself, Brian Fay was there. I see Jessica Horwath and Barbara Toast. And 266696687. That is a person.
Okay, so my, my question was because my screen is showing an anonymous. Could that person please identify themselves?
That's Mark Littlefield.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, Mark, welcome. So here we are.
Thanks.
We're going to move from public comments into the old business and get into the meat of this meeting. And that was the Parking Operations Budget Review of our 2022 Operations CIP and Fund Balance. Now, over the last couple of months, we've been batting back and forth with budget numbers. I think two months ago, we were presented with a bunch of data from staff that was confusing to me and other members of the board. And we asked the director to reassemble this and get it into some format that we could take to our board and, you know, our community council rather, and say, this is what we're talking about with the CIP capital, or the CIP and operating budget in the fund balance. And we have gone a long way to do that. And at that, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Josh Duran, the director. And I believe we'll have a report coming from John. So Josh, would you take it, please?
Sure. Thank you, Pete. Can, can everyone see the, the screen sharing that I just did? I know I've had some challenges with that in the past.
I can.
Okay. And Karen's going to be giving the presentation on this, but just, just for Karen and I's benefit, did all of the board members get an opportunity to review this and potentially write down some questions? I'm just curious how far along everyone got.
Okay.
I was.
Go ahead, Will.
I was gonna say, I was able to look at it. I was just, I know there's a lot of projects here. I like the descriptions, but I also don't really know how to, you know, interpret everything on it. So I mean, I like what I see, but, but I definitely don't understand everything.
Okay. I, I have some comments, Josh. I took some time and I went over it and looked at it in some detail. And I have a few questions to ask. A lot of them are gonna be just for, for terms. What does PF mean at the bottom of, when I think it's the first page there where we're describing our projects? And we go down to, through a list here and it's on Board Eagle River Parks and Rec CIP List Preliminary Project Review 2000, or December 6, 21. And it's got the Eagle River 00 Descriptions and there's 27 projects listed. And the last three that I'm looking at here start off with a prefix PF1307. What does PF stand for?
Thank you, Pete. I, I'm pretty sure it stands for Public Facility, but I will defer to Karen on that.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. That is the Property and Facility Maintenance's project numbers that they assign to. The projects that they do on our behalf that we provide the funding for.
Okay. Second question I have is how does it work that we have sums that come out like in many of these projects that, that were looked at, like we got, it ends with one cent or there's $10,837.12. How is its breakdown so that it's that specific?
Well, when you start us with the balance and then you have invoices coming through, depending on what the invoices are, you can end up with any different denominations of cents and, and dollars remaining. So those would be the remaining balance left from the original appropriation of, for example, $50,000. And maybe we got, you know, 10 bills against it and those are what's the balance remaining after all payments have been made.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. And going a little bit further is overall is I think that this work, once I got to look at it and started, you know, trying to figure out, okay, we're reporting out some notes that we have money left and John is describing where it goes to. I thought that was excellent as far as I can see. It was answering a lot of the questions that I had early on and it ties money to projects and provides $1,328,000 in property tax relief. Now that's something that I'll need some explanation on how that all works. I think I have it, but that's the type of thing that I was optimistic by come out of this. We're finding some money that by juggling these dollars around that we can not really return to the taxpayers, but they're not going to have to pay over the course of the next six years. So that's what I had to say about the CIP. But one other comment that I'll just register now, since I have the time. What I would like to, to see in the operating budget portion of this, of this discussion, and I got that offline and it's quite clear, is I'd like to see an organizational chart attached to the duties and job descriptions of the staff working at Eagle River Chugiak Parks and Rec. Now, I couldn't find an org chart online, but I could find, you know, they got 53 positions and give a little bit description and in various positions. I'd like to see, to expand my understanding, an organizational chart. You know, there's got not names of personnel, but perhaps their job titles and what they do. So I get an idea of what the staff is configured like and deployed like. So those are what, that's what I had to say initially, but I was impressed overall. It is, you have to look at it like, I had to study it for a while to figure it out, but it works. I mean, it's, we, we've managed a lot, a lot of money over the last bunch of years. And it seems to be well tied together now. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Well, thank you, Pete. I, I just wanted to get a, get a better understanding of where everyone was at with that. And as that may guide Karen's verbal description of what's in front of us now. And Karen, if you're ready to get started, please tell me to change pages as the need arises.
Gotcha. So if you guys want to follow along, this first sheet that Josh has up is the first report that was sent out to the board members. And this merely, unless someone needs a lot of time spent on this one, it's merely a recap of basically the report that was handed to you that kind of just blew everybody's minds. And so this is just a better depiction of it with some notes as to what those balances were, why they were there. And it gives you a jumping off point moving forward, so to speak. So this, if, if you look at, there's a total at the, on the second page off to the right. What I'm doing there is I'm balancing back to the report that you guys had and to the reports in the system. The funding reports and financial reports that are hard set in the system. And so I'm just showing that we balanced to that. That was just a check and balance for John and I to make sure that our computations and that we didn't have something skewed in, in the dropdowns here. So, so basically this first sheet is, is almost a technically a replica of what you were handed with the balances. If there is no balance in there, we're telling you where the balance went and where we sent it to. Maybe we re-designated it to undesigned it for, for future use. There are some of these that shows, for example, the first project that actually has a balance in it of the 18967. Right? That shows that the project's complete and it is complete. However, we hold those funds for vandalism repairs and things of that nature. Okay? And so a lot of these little balances are left over from project, previous projects. And like this one says Commons Playground Upgrades, okay? In the Commons Playground with the turf and the, the play equipment, for example, we leave this residual balance in there because I have equipment that snaps off and breaks all the time. We don't have time to wait for a board meeting to replace a, a safety issue or a piece of equipment that, that has broken. We, we go out and we, we order the new piece of equipment or whatever it takes to make it safe again. And that's where I'll come back to these, some of these residual balances. And we've only keeping these balances in the ones that we know to be problematic areas where we time and time again have to come in and make repairs or vandalism or something that's on fire. Or like for the turf, you know, turf can get torn at any time. We don't have just money laying around waiting for a turf repair. So we leave some of these balances in here to come back to it on the problematic areas that we anticipate that we are going to need a little bit of funding to make repairs or to mitigate vandalism or something of that nature. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. And so like Eagle River Skate Park, that's just a balance that's going to be moved. And I think we identified that, yeah, we're going to move that to undesigned it, but it's got a little bit of an issue with the movement right now and nothing to do with anything we've done. It was, happened during the transfer over to the new computer system. So they're trying, OMB is working with me on trying to figure out how to get that out of there. But that balance does exist. The Mirror Lake Trail Lighting, you know, seems like a lot of money, $39,500 left from the trail lighting project that we did to put all those trails in there. But we repeatedly have problems with those new timers, the Astro clocks. And if we have any kind of underground breaks or line breaks or anything, this little remaining amount allows me to go out and make those repairs as needed in an emergency situation. Okay. So any of these that we are making notes that we're going to hold for vandalism and repairs. So we're just identifying that this balance in this project is not going to go back into undesigned it. We, we go back to these time and time again for mitigating circumstances. Okay? And so if you guys have had a chance to look at those or have any questions on any of those, then that's what we want to, you know, hear and know about at this point. Because this is just basically we're showing you where the, the balances that you had on your report, whether they're going somewhere or whether they're going to stay in that little project line for mitigation purposes or repairs.
I got a question, Karen.
Yep.
I see $173,543 for, in a reserve fund for the Harry McDonald Center Reserve Projects. Is that, is that something you're holding for like a major maintenance account or something like that?
That is what that is, is the McDonald Center Reserves funding is their, their 4% retainage fees that they pay us every month. And it goes into this reserve account and is held in the event that we have to come in and help them with a major maintenance, major repair or something. Or for example, when they come to us and they say they want, they want a new Zamboni, right? We look at that balance right there, see how much of the retainage we've, we've put away for them. And yeah, how is that money best spent? And then that's where that money comes from. And that is only McDonald Center.
I, I have a question about repairs. Now, this is, you know, it is divided between materials and labor, right?
It can be, yeah. In the project lines, you mean?
Yeah, where it says, you know, when you say hold for vandalism and repairs and then, you know, yeah, just, you know, having, having the wood repairs in there. Do, would it be better if it would be more specific, like, you know, percentage of how much goes into labor and how much goes into material? Or is this just an overall lump sum, like, okay, we're paying that much for repair?
Right. I don't put a percentage into the labor because we, my department, we don't charge for the labor. The only time that we get charged labor in the projects is if we have like a project manager or a consulting firm or something like that. Or like facility maintenance, maintenance and operations, like those PF projects, they will all have labor in there because they have people working on those projects for us. And so those will have a labor line, but we don't identify it upfront because we don't know, you know, how much hours and labor is going to consist in those projects. So we don't necessarily identify a, a number to labor. It's just built into the project and if it gets used for labor, okay. And if it's typically is used for invoices and expenses, very rarely do I charge labor. I don't charge my team on the projects as labor. It's just a, it's a freebie to the, to the project.
I see a couple of hands up and I'd like to go with the first one I saw, which is, only has a plus six. I don't know who that person is.
This is John.
I see you, John. There's somebody else there that, that I'm trying to recognize. Is that you, Barbara?
Yeah, that's me. But John, if you wanted to respond to that topic, I had a different question.
No, go ahead, Barb.
Okay. And I'm just curious, I'm seeing that there's some FEMA funds that are being transferred. Are these, were these just general funds and are they easily transferred? Or are there some restrictions on what they can be used for?
They're, they're not FEMA funds. What we're, what we're saying per se is that that project, we had, we had that project identified with a balance in it already. And then when the earthquake happened, FEMA, we received FEMA funds to complete those projects. So therefore that freed up the balance in those accounts to be utilized in another area once I was sure and could assure that we were going to receive the actual FEMA payout. Those two projects there, we did receive payout on. So we're, we're, John and I are now reevaluating and, and showing you guys where we would use that money and where our intentions would go, since that's essentially free money to us now. It wasn't free. Don't get me wrong. FEMA was a, that's a, a, something else dealing with that. But that's the residual money that we had in the pot before FEMA picked the project up and, and reimbursed us.
Thanks.
John Rada?
So maybe to clarify what Karen was saying earlier. If, if a project goes over to capital projects, for example, and it's hard for us to determine what happens, they will charge us anywhere between 3%, 8% or 11% overhead for their administration. So that it's, it's out of our hands. Because if they end up administering the project, the internal labor cost from them is a minimum of 3%. Their overhead is 8% and combined could be anywhere between 11 and 14%. So it's, that's, that's another element of costs that goes back to doing a project, just, just so we have a more in-depth explanation.
Thank you, John. Will?
Yeah, so I'm looking at, some of these projects are completed with zero balance. And then I also see there are some numbers missing. I'm assuming that next time this report comes out, we would, we would, these finished projects would be hidden, the ones with zero balance. And then I assume that there are some missing projects that that's already happened to. Is that correct?
I don't think that there's, I, I'm unaware of missing projects, but yes, we would, our intention is to remove those from the report. With this SAP reporting, you can't remove them. They're there forever, whether they're done, completed or not. I can't get rid of them. So what I do is I have to download their report to a spreadsheet and then manipulate that spreadsheet to get rid of those lines. So you don't have to see them. It both takes some manipulation.
So like ER0009 between the playground and the skateboard park, was the, is there a missing pro, is there an old project in there between eight and 10?
No, I leave vacancies like that. So if I have a like project that's maybe in the same park, I want to fill in those numbers in those gaps. Does that make sense?
Okay, that's, that's a great clarification. I was wondering how, how we cleaned this up. So.
No, no, everything should be there and accounted for. The ones that don't have balances, we should be telling you where those balances are going. The ones that say they had a zero balance, was a zero balance on your report? And we're just showing that we're going to get rid of it. But I want you to see the very clear picture that we're going to jump off on first to page two here.
John, did you have another question? You're muted.
Turn your microphone off.
Oops, sorry. The goal of this was to give you a more complete and clear picture of what we have completed and what we have in process. And all the questions so far have been really good. What we need, I believe, to focus on is where are we going? And that's what Josh and Karen and I and Shanna have kind of looked at to give you something that is more representative of the financial condition on the CIP so that everybody can kind of sink their teeth into it and a look back and a look forward. So as we move forward in this discussion, I, I'm hopeful that's where it's going to go.
Okay. Thank you, John. Proceed, Karen.
All right. So basically this is just a recap of what you've already gotten and just a clarification, clarifying and letting you guys know, you know, a starting point. The second, Josh, if you want to turn to the second report. Thank you. Is really where John is identifying. And this is kind of really where we wanted, you know, to have the discussion is as, as Will, as you just mentioned, all the zeros and no balances. You see on the top half of this report that there, there are none of those, right? They're gone. So that's where we've cleaned this up. You don't see any of the zero balances. You don't see any of the ones that were complete, but yet the balance has been moved to undesigned it. This shows what is truly left with the balance in it. The top portion is pre-existing projects that are complete, that we're retaining those balances for, whether it's the vandalism mitigation, whatever, or future replacement of something. And then the second section down below are all of the new CIP projects that we have designated over the last few years, but have not essentially started. There's a couple that are active, you can see, that we're in the middle of. And you'll recognize those, such as the dog park. We've kind of started that process. The park maintenance facility, that's active. We're in the middle of it. But these are the project balances of our new projects. And if it says new project, we have not started that project yet, but we anticipate doing so in the future here. And so we've just delineated the previous existing projects up top with balances left in them that we're going to keep those balances in there, or we intend to with your approval. And then the second group is the new projects and balances that have not been initiated and the ones that we're currently actively working on. And their current balances. Okay? Because those balances are moving targets on the ones we're actively working on. They're changing every day if I have invoices coming in and we're. Okay. And then if you see the third section at the bottom of that page is our proposed new projects for 2022 for approval to the board. And our, our, our best ideas of where we are heading and what we envision needing to be accomplished with the CIP funds coming forward. And so this is really the guts of what we're presenting as far as where do we want to be? Where are we heading? And how do we want it divided?
I have a question for you, Karen.
Yep.
Where does, where does this, these funds come from that are like the proposed new projects? We've got, you know, $1.7 million. Where is that coming from? How do we get the funds, those funds together?
That will come from our CIP designation of the point one that comes to us each, each tax season. And it also will come from the undesigned it balances that we've rolled over from closed out projects into undesigned it.
So at some point, the Chugiak High School Pool improvements, that's a million, maybe. It could be a hell of a lot more. We haven't dug into that yet. That's something that we, we're generating funds for now. Is that correct?
That, well, that, that is something that we have a, a balance of, that we've been kind of accumulating over the years. But John and I have on that project line, when you find the Chugiak Pool, we're taking, we have identified that we're taking some of the money out of that project, returning it to undesigned it. And for the pool, since we anticipate it to be such a high dollar fix, we don't have that much money set aside for the pool. And we can't, once we go onto the fix, we can't just, you know, stop in the middle of it. We're gonna have to, you know, if we bite off on it, we're going. So that $1 million at the bottom, those big projects, that 2.5 million, as you know, in the red off to the side, we're, we're identifying that that would come from fund balance. That 4.6 million that we have, right? So those big projects such as that, that's where that money comes from for these ones. Everything above that would all come from undesigned it and CIP funds.
Will?
Yeah. So Karen, is this, is, am I right in assuming that this is the proposed CIP schedule that Eagle River Parks and Rec would like us? am I right in assuming that this is the proposed CIP schedule that, um, Eagle River Parks and Rec would like us to approve?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm just getting everyone a time to absorb in case you have a question.
I, I think it looks great. I would, uh, you know, if you could just quickly go through. So, so as I understand, um, do we also need to approve these holds and transfers at the, the holds at the top? Is that part of the approval?
Um, I'm, I wasn't anticipating it, but I'm, I'm sure that you guys have the say.
Well, I think those look great. Can we just all agree that holding everything that's complete, we can agree upon and we can move? If we need to agree on it, can we just give a thumbs up on that? I mean, we don't need an official motion, but just so we can move forward. Everyone's good with that first section?
Yeah. John has a question.
For clarification and thank you, Will. I think it's important to look at the history of the Chugiak Eagle River Parks and Recreation Service area, because it all ties together. When you look at the background pre-2004, and Brian and Lexi would remember this very well. We were lucky to have two nickels to rub together to do anything. In 2004, the community voted to match our operating budget, which was point five mil with point five mil capital. Over time, we made a lot of capital improvements in the community. And later, we realized that as those dollars were spent, we had to take care of them. So we changed that distribution from point five and point five to point seven and point three. Point seven was the operating and point three was the capital. And then later it became point nine operating and point one capital. So where we're at now is we have, we have dollars that are in reserve to take care of problems on projects that have been funded in the past. We have allocated funds to take care of projects as we have seen that we need in the future. And at the same time, we're taking care of some of the things that we knew were coming in the future, which were major projects. And part of that process was save our money. Don't overtax the public, but every dollar that we save will go into a reserve. So when a big project comes around, we don't tax the undesignated, we use the fund balance to pay for those major projects. And I think what this represents in, in kind of Josh, if you go to the next page, you'll look at how we have determined well-mindedly that we can take care of these big issue projects. Brian and Lexi know this from our conversations. Pete, I think you've got a little bit of background on it. For example, just, just doing, um, doing the park maintenance facility and operations for storage and stuff like that. So if you look at the stuff that's in there, but I think it's really significant is we have an opportunity now to give our taxpayers back, if you want to call it, a rebate on the bond indebtedness and pay it off. We currently have 602,062 dollars owing. We can pay that off and save 700 and some thousand dollars. The taxpayers are not going to pay any money. It's done. It's washed. It's off the books. And we can use the other funds to pay for the pool projects and as originally intended for the park maintenance facility, take those extra funds out of fund balance and pay that. That was the original intent. When we had big ticket items, we saved for years to take care of these things. So the taxpayers doesn't have another burden. We don't go to, we don't go to a bond or we don't do anything like that. So I, I, I think this represents realistically a picture that everybody, um, can look at and say, you know, we have been diligent about the way we have used our funds on behalf of the taxpayer in our community. And I, I think that's, that's part of the story. Okay.
Thank you, John. That was, that was, uh, what I learned most from the report that I've seen. Now I'd like to, uh, ask a couple of questions. I wanted to know if anybody, uh, that, uh, Mark Littlefield, do you have any comments, Mark?
I, I can't see the report in front of me, so I'm just going and writing notes and I'll, I'll have to discuss with you later if I ever get a chance to see the report.
I will, uh, make that happen. I'll, I'll, I'll make arrangements to get you a copy of that report, uh, as soon as possible, Mark.
Actually, Mark can just walk down the hallway and grab it from my office tomorrow.
Okay.
Doesn't have to take anything.
Just as long as he gets, uh, gets it right away and, and, uh, has a chance to, to, to root around in it and see if he has some questions. But, uh, we had a, a conversation some time ago, Mark, about this. And, uh, the genesis of, uh, some of the things we were talking about, I think is embodied in this report. You were saying, you know, with this fund balance, we can't just sit on it. We need to use it in some way. And, and I think I've, I've got, uh, that, uh, indication of how that will be done from, uh, the Parks and Rec folks. So, uh, let's, let's move on a little further. Now, Will, you were asking about, you know, uh, what do we need to approve or, and, uh, can we move forward? Uh, I've looked at the entire report from the CIP completed and the, the, all of the numbers in the lines in the final page that John just referred to, that is, uh, showing how we're going to use the fund balance. Now I want to encourage everybody to take out the, the, the report that was sent to us and look at some of the small print on it. Cause that was very clarifying. Uh, John mentioned it. He was referring to numbers and whatnot. They're all on this, uh, the, how we're going to use the fund balance piece of work. So.
So, uh, Pete, before we get to that, I'm still trying to wrap my head around how, uh, what's going on with, uh, the taxpayer relief here. And I know John has said it, but I, 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 it's, I haven't quite figured it out. So John, can you, um?
I might be able to help out with this one too.
Okay, Josh. Yeah.
Um, so the, the division in Eagle River Chugiak used to bond for projects. When you bond for a project, it gets approved by the voters and then the voters pay off that debt over a 20-year period. The last bond that was passed within the Eagle River area, based on looking at the reports, appears to be 2008 because currently they are paying off that debt all the way into 2008. What we're currently proposing, and the critical word there is proposing, is we're identifying that we can use the fund balance now to pay off that debt in total and not have that taxpayer burden all the way into 2028. That is an option that exists now. And then for the group collective, this is all simply a proposal based on known things we're working on, our pulse of what the community needs. And our goal is to have this approved in some form or fashion prior to August of 2022. So all of this can be officially laid out for the next six years, the capital plan. And that will be available for anyone to look at on the municipal OMB website. So does that, does that answer your question, Will?
Yeah. And so the numbers were if we transfer that 600,000 to pay off the bond debt, that's going to save us an equal amount of interest. Is that, or, or even more than that in interest? Is that correct?
John?
I will defer to you on that, Karen. I don't, I'm not sure how that plays into interest savings. Um, it just positions us to not have to ask taxpayers on an annual basis for the next seven years to repay this debt. But I'm not sure if there's an advantage as it relates to paying it now and what interest is saved. That might be a complicated question for OMB.
Good. Now, we got it. We have the answer.
Um, am I okay with answering?
Yes, John. Go ahead.
Go right ahead.
Okay. The current budget is 1.06 mils for Chugiak Eagle River Parks and Recreation. The point oh six is the bond indebtedness. That is the 200 plus thousand is currently in that budget. We are proposing to take fund balance and pay off the total bond indebtedness of 602,062 dollars now. That, if you flat out the screen, if you will, over the next six years, do the math, saves us 700 plus thousand dollars. And the taxpayers will not pay anything else in the future. We will pay off the bond. That's, that's the nexus of what we're trying to do. So it is a direct taxpayer relief for the immediate tax that you would receive or your assessment, and you will never have to pay that again in the future. We have cleared the balance. That's the point.
Okay. I'm going to just restate what you said, cause I think I get it now. So it's 600 and some thousand of money that we have that is a loan, uh, by, by the bond. And, uh, you know, the, the total that we'd have to pay back is 700 and something. So we're saving a hundred and some thousand from interest. But in addition.
Sorry. Hold on, Will. That, that's not true. We're paying right now 220, we're paying 221,000 dollars a year up to 2028. So.
Oh, so no. So it's 700,000 in interest.
Correct. So if we pay it off now versus when we just let it ride to the end date of 2028 or something, whatever it is. If we let it ride and we keep paying the amounts that we're paying at the point oh six tax, um, then we're actually paying 1.3 million dollars on a 602,000 dollar balance. So.
That's, that's the key part.
Yep. We're saving 700,000 of taxpayer dollars. Plus from, from this point when we pay it off, we never, it will never, the point oh six will never be collected from the taxpayers again at all, because there's no more bond indebtedness. So it's not only up to 2028, it's that point forward. It, the, the, the tax goes back to down to the 1.0 mil and not 1.06 anymore.
So we're giving up 600,000 in, um, funds that we could be using, but what we're gaining is a reduction in the tax of point oh six. And we're also saving the taxpayers over 700,000 dollars. I think that sounds like a great deal now that I understand it.
Will, if you look at the first point on the CIP funding notes that I prepared.
Yep.
602,062, and we are going to save 726,000 dollars.
I, yes, I get it now. I wasn't, I was confused whether it was additive or whether that was including the 600, but it's additive. It's this, it, it's on top of the 600,000. So.
Yep.
Yep. Yep. That was my confusion. So got it. That sounds great. That sounds great, you guys.
Okay. Somebody answer the phone. Oh, oh, sorry. All right. We'll move on here. Karen, as soon as we have some quiet, you can continue.
My wife had to get the phone.
Okay. So, so i- in line with this, item number two on this breakdown is where we identify that this, the Chugiak High School pool repairs are likely to cost at least a million dollars. We won't know fully until we have an assessment, full assessment done, but that's our, you know, our best, greatest, you know, synopsis. Um, right now we have 817 from the first page, uh, uh, that we've saved over the years. Um, nickel and diamond, putting it in there, knowing for this rainy day was coming for the pool. Um, however, it's not enough. Okay. So what we're proposing here is that we're going to take 700,000 of that, of that height of the pool, um, capital funds and give it back to undesignated. And then we would pull the 1. million from the fund balance in order to fund the entire project without having to break it up or phase it out or anything of that nature. We'll be able to cover the entire balance, whatever that may be. Once the assessment is done and we have a real, real clear picture moving forward of the cost that that might entail. Does that make sense? And then that 700,000 that goes back to undesignated will get reutilized for the proposed 2022 projects that we've proposed on that first page here. Given everyone catching up. Anyone got a question on that? And, and, and if you look at the, the language here, um, John has spelled it out very detailed. Love, you know, we're putting, we're keeping 117, 245 for the assessment. And we're giving 700 back to undesignated. And then we're planning on whatever the assessment comes in at, maybe it's one, one million, 1.2 million, whatever that is. We anticipate that to come from the fund balance to fund the entire project in one shot without having to break it up or postpone it further. Um, when we are ready to go with it. Any questions on that, you guys? Did I hear? Yes? Nope. Okay. So like item number three, I'm moving on. You guys stop me if you have a question. Item number three that we're, we're identifying is the Eagle River Chugiak Park Maintenance Facility. Right? We're in the middle of phase one right now. Um, we are talking about returning, um, from phase one has already gone over, um, the budgeted costs. Okay. And so when that went over, that's not a project that we're managing. It's, it's facility ma- and maintenance and operations is managing that. And so their labor and, and the costs associated and due to COVID and shipping and everything, those costs have, have, have gone up. And so, um, knowing that they went up, they needed more funds. We did not have more designated to that project. We only had the left remaining from the 1.5 that we put in there, which was 800 and I think 50 that we had left over. It's gone over that. And so what I did is what we did is we had to take the, the seven this balance that we're going to return. Um, we had to take that from undesignated to, to keep this project rolling. Well, now we're in a position where we can give that back to the undesignated where, where it should have came from, because this mount and this project um, was our intention to pay out of the fund balance. And so we would return that 793 back to undesignated. And then we would pull that from the fund balance to, to get this project squared up and, and in the right lane again here. And that's item three. Our next proposal for the fund balance is item number four is our facility, park maintenance facility, phase two. So what we're doing is we're, best guess is that phase two is going to cost us about 1.5 with the increased costs at phase one, right now we're incurring. We're, we're, we're guestimating phase two to be a little bit more because the second building is going to have plumbing in it. It's going to have to have sprinkler systems. It's going to have to have some office and some computers and things of that nature. So it's going to cost a little bit more than the first one. This is where the staff will be for the maintenance crew. This is where we have to have some very good, um, air handlers. We have to have some very good plumbing and some drains, things a little bit, we're stepping it up a notch on the other side. We have to have, we're required to have sprinkler systems. So we're going to have people manning that building. Um, we'll have to have, uh, higher level exhaust systems and things of that nature in that second building. So we anticipate this, the phase two, which won't happen until that other side of the property becomes available. And I think 2025, something like that. Something like that, um, that this one point five for phase two. Providing, don't go more than that, would also come from the fund balance, okay? And so if you, if you guys look at your sheets down towards the bottom of this page, you see what we have um, kind of in bold, it says fund balance, and there's where we got the four point six million. Balance that we have right now. And then we're we're identifying that we're reducing that balance by those items up above that we just just talked about, and I'm one, two, three, and four. And the total amount that those cost us, and that leaves us a balance in the fund balance. Paying for all those projects, making everything right, that leaves us a balance of seven fifty-nine, five oh seven in fund balance. And from that. We're anticipating possibly. Um. The uh, we're we're just anticipating that that um. Mirror Lake, Edmonds Lake access for Edmondson. Is gonna cost maybe six hundred thousand to the municipality, right? And so that would come from fund balance if we utilize that for that. Purpose. And that would bring our fund balance down to one fifty-nine, five oh seven. From four point six. We're paying off the bonds. Would be funding the pool. Would be um. Adding the the balance needed to the phase one of the facility. Um, for the maintenance, and then we would be covering phase two of the maintenance facility with that as well. From fund balance.
Okay, I see, I see two hands up, I'll go first with John Rada.
Um, I'll defer to whoever's there in case I need to answer.
Will, taken. Can't hear you, Will.
Can you, thank you, can you um, clarify the difference between fund balance and undesigned, and also I believe two people just joined us uh, with telephone numbers?
Can I add that uh, there, there is no volume, are they muted or?
I just heard you, Camilla. Back to you, John.
Excuse me, so who's on, who's on the line?
People on, people may have called in, I saw some numbers flash up, uh, I see Mark Littlefield still there, and two other people have just joined us. This is Pete Panarice, uh. Is there somebody that'd like to to say something that has just joined the meeting? Okay, hearing none, John, I'll give you back the floor.
Okay, so. Uh, Will had a question about undesigned. And undesigned is. Our. Money that we collect. That's the capital funds. The capital. On the other side, or if you wanna call it the reserve. Are the funds we have saved. And what we're doing is taking our savings account. To pay for big ticket. Capital items which we have anticipated over the years, which would be forthcoming. And we will spend them accordingly. When you. Spend. Either fund. You have to remember. That. We're only going to be collecting. Undesignated. About three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year. Based on the current. Um, budget process, which is point one. So we're gonna have a marginal amount of money, so. In using our savings judiciously as we anticipated over the years. We're gonna take care of the big ticket items. With the fund balance, which we saved for. And we're still gonna collect the undesigned, which is the point one. To take care of the capital projects. And the key. Piece to this whole thing is, no matter what we do in the community, whatever we build, whatever we. Prepare for, we have to take care of, that is part of what we have to acknowledge.
Any other questions? Comments? On the budget presentation so far? Anything you'd like to add, Josh?
I I think um, one, I really appreciate Pete and the rest of the board for. Pushing us towards this moment to have clarity, it, I have to admit that it benefits me as well, bringing John back in with all of his institutional knowledge. And uh, we look forward to future discussions on this and having some permanence as we get closer to um, the end of next summer.
I see a hand up on my screen here, and it's next to a plus ten. Karen, can you give me any idea who that might be?
Uh, Barbara, that's you.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, John, could you repeat that number for the point one? Um, for the the capital, what was that again, I wasn't fast enough writing it down.
Uh, I'm sorry Barb, you said the point one is what?
For the 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 number you said for the capital, the point one uh, was like three hundred and something that we that we pull in every year.
The current. Um, the current distribution under the budget. And and Josh can confirm this. Um, but we are at a point one capital. Um. Distribution. And that is right now, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year.
Been confirmed, thank you, John.
True.
So going forward. Uh, I guess I'll, I'll go back and try to articulate that a little bit better. The money we're spending. I'm sorry. Have to take my hat off, my old hat. The money that Chugiak Eagle River is going to collect and spend is gonna be point nine. Mil. For operating. And point one. For capital contribution. The point one is currently three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars per year. That is.
Yeah, I I understood, I just wanted to make sure, I mean, this kinda means like that is kinda, if if we keep at that rate. Basically, looking forward into the future since we're looking at spending out. Um, the fund balance on a lot of the these big ticket items, basically. We're then gonna have to think about. The next big ticket items out. For future years, because at roughly four hundred thousand a year, we're, that we're bringing in on capital, we're not gonna be able to. You know, to spend as much, which is fine, I just wanted to, I just wanted that number again, so thanks.
No, and and actually, that's a really good observation, because we have, we have done so much. In the last seventeen years. Since the voters approved. The additional capital mill levy increase. We still have to take care. Of what we have. But we've done so many capital projects, and we still have a few to do. We still have to take care of them, but we're not gonna have as many. Big ticket items as we used to have. And so that. Three hundred and ninety-five, four hundred thousand, whatever you call it. Is going to sustain us. For a long time. We have to be prudent on how we spend our money, and that's how, I guess. I guess my explanation is this. We have saved. We have done well. The community has been provided. And we have delivered service. Now we have to focus on. Finishing what we have. And be prepared to take care of what we have. And. Move us into the future, and that's what this whole goal has been, to give you this assessment of our condition.
Will Tagan.
Thanks Pete, uh, Barbara, you know, one thing that I I do see happening more is these public-private partnerships, um, and um, I have had some. Talks with the um, Anchorage Park Foundation about maybe being a little more active out this way, um. And of course, what's happening with Loretta French with the the volunteer match, so I think we do have some opportunities to leverage that. Uh, taxpayer money and to, you know, double it or more with these, you know, with with. With Parks and Rec and the taxpayers being able to seed some of these projects and and grow them through, through, you know, nonprofit and other partnership, private partnerships. So I I think we have some opportunities there more than just relying on um. What we see in the budget.
Good, thanks Will, uh, is there anybody else who wants to add, I see uh, Brian Fay for the first time, he's gonna contribute something, Brian?
Hey Pete, thank you, um, I just wanted to say that, you know, Will's comment about the public-private partnerships. I think historically, John has done a good job of of leveraging the money that we have in a variety of partnerships, but. The the proposal that's coming out about working on trails and just, I I think one of the things that's provided in all of the documentation tonight is. Some clarity of of the real money that's there and what you've got to work with in the future, and I think it's, it, I think it kind of. Amplifies the fact that. You need to have a a long view of what we want for the community and start, start planning ahead for those projects so that we. You know, can save for what we want as opposed to just having what might be perceived as a slush fund, and and I think this is a really nice. Document, I think it it goes a long way towards helping the board focus and maybe helping the community focus too, thanks.
Thanks Brian, John, one last comment?
Yeah, so. Uh, Mark, are you still online?
Yep.
So one of the things that we have tried to do. Over the years. Is work cooperatively with Subursa. And. That is something that Anchorage. Doesn't do well. In Chugiak, however, we have always done that well. So when we talk about projects. That will benefit the community. Historically, before your time, but when I worked with Scott Schnell. We try to help you and you try to help us. And that is where some of these. Undesignated or. Fund balance monies. Provide benefit back to the community. And I think that's really important. Um, I'm not sure people recognize that. Um, they probably have never seen it. But. We've always, we've always done that together. And so I just, I just wanna kinda emphasize that point.
Okay, what I would like to do at this point is ask Josh a question. And that, and that is, is we've, we've. Had a really. Great improvement in the budget understandability, going from three months, four months back. I I have a greater sense of what's going on, and I I trust other board members do, too. Do you need anything from us at this point? About the budget information that we have, because uh, I I would like to know if we can do something for you tonight, otherwise. I think that. Board members uh, may wanna chew on this a little bit, I would like to to hear from other members of the community, maybe that see it, that are outside our. Our group of people in the know, so to speak, and uh, just, just leave it with you as that, do we need to to act tonight? Or do we just express our satisfaction, or this is great information, but of course, there'll be other questions.
Yeah, thank you Pete, um. No, we don't, we don't specifically need anything tonight, um, of course, we're always curious to the pulse of the board. And um, it sounds like you're more informed now, have a better understanding, and that's exactly what we want as we position ourselves to make real decisions. Again, by the end of this summer, so this can officially be part of the, both the C I B and the C I P for the service area.
Well, the only thing that I, that I, that I need, that I didn't see tonight, and I mentioned this to Karen, I probably mentioned this starting out with, is I'd like to see a current organizational chart. Not names and blocks, but just duty descriptions, you know, landscape architect or whatever, to see how it all ties together. Uh, for Parks, Chugiak Eagle River, and then, you know, I think I would be able to go to my council and, and you know, run it down to him real well with. Some time, this is not, not something that you can tell somebody all about in just a couple minutes. So uh, I'll go back to the hands that are up, Karen?
Yeah, I I just have a a quick clarification, um, from my understanding from, for for John and Josh, is that um. The the only one that I, and I'm, and I could be wrong, is that would we not have to have a decision on this um. Bond indebtedness if we're gonna pay it off, I I don't know if we, i- is it something that we would wait for till the mid or end of two thousand twenty-two? I would think that we'd want to do that pretty soon, right?
I think we have to figure a couple things out on that Karen, and see what a timeline would look at through consultation from budget analysts and O M B. And that'll determine a timeline and when we would actually need approval from the board for such an idea.
Okay, great.
Good question.
Okay, Will?
Um, what would really help me, and I know we can just talk about each of these things, but if there was a couple sentences under like E R thirty-four tennis court repairs, like. Is that all tennis courts, or do you have a specific project in mind, um, security cameras, like I I really like these, I I can imagine what they're for, but um. Just a couple sentences on a separate page on what these projects are and where they are, so that I, we don't have to just. Talk about them would help me really. You know, put that together.
Will, I can't remember if you were on the board when we, when we approved, already approved these projects and and explained them, I I, it may have been Tony that was there at that time. But like the tennis court is the Schroder Park Tennis Courts, and yeah, all of those were identified and and approved through the board. For those.
I just don't remember the specifics, um, you know, so if you, you know, even just like i- i- if we have another column and say Beach Lake Trail Lights Replacements, like. I mean, I know what those are. But like, when you have the Beach Lake Northwest Quarter Section, like I'm excited about that section, but, and I see a, you know, six hundred thousand, that is a lot of money for it. What is um? Where did that number come from, just in a couple sentences?
Gotcha.
John Rada.
The Northwest Quarter Section twenty-five. Um. Was a very, very long process. And we envisioned that at some time, I'm sorry, I have to take my hat off again. We envisioned. That. The development. Was going to be. Community compatible. And more of a passive recreation area. Including maybe um, a sledding hill on the, on the upper section. And um. But not prime development, if you wanna call it, there was gonna have to be some parking off of Pioneer. And we, we recognize that. So there, there's going to be some money, but it's not going to be a huge amount of money because we're not going to overdevelop the Northwest Quarter. So maybe that's part of your answer.
Well, no, to clarify it, which, so this is just building out the master plan. I mean, I've looked at the master plan. So, oh, yeah, that would just be helpful. Like for an additional thing, say, build out Northwest Quarter to master plan, just so.
I think, I think what's challenging, I think what's challenging sometimes is you know, we try to give you something to look at without a tremendous amount of detail. But I think what's important is what we've given you, I think, is a pretty clear picture of where we're at and where we're going. And we can have those discussions as we move forward. That's the important piece. I want people to feel comfortable with the information that's been provided. But I want them to have engaging discussions to follow about where we as a community want to go with these projects.
Thank you, John. Well, what I'd like to do is call an Ollie Ollie Infree on the budget discussion right now and
Can I please, I just, I'm sorry, Pete, but I have a, I have a question because I think I'm, maybe I'm just not getting this, but looking at this budget, it sounds to me like that category of new projects that were laid out from 2022 through 2025 using that fund balance, we're going to be using that fund balance for something else now. So that is described on the page that is up right now and the following page, basically that, or am I not getting it? I mean, we can't use that money for two things. So these projects that are basically what was laid out in the coming years, that might still be a plan, but we have to think about what money is coming in because we're spending the fund balance as described or as proposed here on that page. So, or am I misunderstanding that?
The other projects would be coming from undesignedated funds and the CAP from yearly, the $400,000 yearly allowance that we're typically getting for the, for the CAP funds.
Yeah, which, when I'm looking at this, yeah, I mean, obviously, I mean, there's quite a sum of money. It's 4 million. And so we, what, all I'm saying is we're going to be, have to, we're going to have to look at and pick out of those projects. They're not all going to happen. They're not all going to happen at the same time. And we're only going to be able to do what we can with the money that's coming in.
I think what's important is if you look at where we're at, we're taking our savings account and we're going to spend it as we long-term planned to spend. And the undesignedated, we're going to spend as we have planned forward, recognizing we're not going to have that much money each year for additional projects. So being prudent about how we plan in advance, this is merely a planning tool. Take care of where we're at and let's be thoughtful about where we go in the future and how we spend our money.
Any follow-up, Barbara?
No, no, thanks. I understand that. I'm just, it sounded to me like we're asking Karen and John and Josh to put, maybe potentially put extra work into sort of these future projects where, you know, currently with the plan that we have, we don't necessarily have the funds to tackle those. We, you know, we're prioritizing on some of the other more necessary projects. And so maybe that is less of an issue because, you know, we'll get to that when, when we actually have some money gathered up again to actually tackle those. That was my thought, but.
Thank you. Uh, Will?
Yeah, just to go off what Barbara said, I'm looking at the next page that goes through 2024. Is, is what Barbara's saying correct, that we're going to need to prioritize those proposed new projects? Or is there currently, are you estimating that there will be funding for everything on this page at the current, as, as funds come in through the next two years?
If, if you go to this, this same page that we're already on here, about halfway down, you see where we've already accounted for being able to, to fund all of those new projects that we've identified, with the exception of the fund balance ones, because that's going to take some determination by you guys. But what we show here is that we show the undesignedated balance, right? You can see man designated of 608 at the top line there. And then we're saying we're going to add the funds from number two and three above. And then we're showing how much money's coming back in. That's 1.4 coming back into undesignedated. And then we're subtracting three projects that were under, you know, that we added funds to of 325. That gives us 1.7 million in undesignedated. And then we're adding these new projects of the 1.69 million that we, that we've identified here as the new projects for 2022. We've already showed that that's 1.6 coming out of undesignedated, which leaves us a balance of 87,000 in undesignedated. So we've already got the funds to complete all of these 22 identified projects, with the exception of the fund balance ones, which we would have to go to assembly and, and, you know, and board approval and all of that. And so we already have the funds in undesignedated by what John and I are doing and manipulating and transferring these funds around. We've already accounted for being able to, providing our, providing our estimates are correct on the, on what's needed. We have already accounted that we have the money in undesignedated right now to complete the 2022 designated projects that we're suggesting we do.
And to clarify, those 2022 projects are, that's in it, so the fund balance would pay for the pool and the park maintenance facility. And then the CAP, which is the undesignedated, would pay for these eight other projects from the Beach Lake Ski Trails to Turner Park. So I think, Barbara, does that help you in that they have a budget for those proposed projects? It's just a, it's a different part of the budget.
Right. And then moving forward, we are just, we're getting 400,000 a year moving forward to re-des, to re-identify whatever we want moving forward.
Right. I was talking about the, the, if you go to the next page, I was talking about those projects in the middle that, that had been identified to go out into 2025 and that are like, and some of it, that was just because Will had talked about the Northwest Quarter with the $600,000. Those projects, yeah, in the center part, those are not the new, that, those are the longstanding projects, the new projects that you guys are talking about funding with the 1.69 million dollars are the, are the CAP projects. And so I, all I was trying to say is that, that those, those projects in that second block from the top, those are going to be the ones where we have to, since we're spending with, with the proposal that you've put together, we're spending that, that, the funding that was sort of intended for, for that, we're spending that on other projects that are more, that are a higher priority. And so any of those that are not currently active, they need to be, that is something to, to think about in the future with the money that's coming in at roughly 400,000 a year.
I think so, yeah. Okay, John Rada?
Okay, so, thank you, Barbara. We have tried over the years to position ourself to take care of current and future projects. And the monies that you see allocated in that 22 to 25 are funded.
Yes.
We will never see a day that we don't have another project, another need come forth in the community. That's where the additional 395, 400,000 as we collect that over time, we'll take care of those projects. That has been the goal for almost 20 years, at least of mine, to put us in this position. So we can take care of our needs, we can take care of what we think are going to be our future needs, and we will be having those discussions as time moves on. So what, what you see is funded projects with the monies we have. And then we'll move forward from there.
Okay, thank you, John. We need to move on fairly soon. So make it brief, Will, if you have another comment, question? Okay, Will, is there anyone else who, I see a hand up again. Barbara, did you have more?
That's, that's Camilla.
Camilla?
Next, yep.
Yeah, hi, just last comment and promise I'll end it there. I think, I wonder if John and Karen, you know, if we go back to, as I remember how explained of why we put the fund balance in there, or, you know, how, how it became. And then looking at whether, you know, it was projects, and you just mentioned 20 years ago, that you thought were important. And I mentioned at our meeting, you know, where you were present with Pete, that I mentioned that, you know, people's priorities change. So, you know, there's always something that comes up that goes interferes with what the project is. And this is, this is problematic for me. Like, if I would vote on something like that right now, you know, who knows what happens? I mean, we, it's almost like for me, I thought it was something that we kept aside as a stake, just in case, kind of like when we need the money. But we don't know what it is for. Is it going to be for projects? Is it going to be for like an emergency, you know, like a roof collapses? Who knows? I know we're going to have assistance from outside, you know, FEMA helped and it took a long time to get reimbursed, so it's still happening. But this is where I come in. And I, you know, I don't know if I make myself clear, but going through the details and the discussion, this is what I came out with. And for me, it, you know, it's really hard, it's a hard of a concept to think about. Yeah, there is money that's going to be, it's set aside, these are the projects. But how can I guarantee that this is what's going to happen and these, these monies are going to be, you know, there for these projects? Things change, priorities change. And I'm stepping off.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to weigh in for just a second. Camilla, you and I had this conversation with Pete and Karen. You come from a nonprofit background, so do I. I learned a long time ago that a dollar is not a dollar. You have to save something because emergencies, priorities, expectations, whatever is going to happen. And you know what? I took that to heart a long time ago. And when I went, went to work for the city, after years, after almost 25 years, I did the same thing. I saved. And Karen did the same thing when I went back to City Hall. We saved. We saved for our community. So when these things happen, we dip into our savings to take care of those things. We don't have the largesse of multiple dollars to take care of everything we want to do. We have positioned ourself over the years to do these things. And, and we are in a great position, not only to pay off the bonded indebtedness, but take care of the multiple capital projects that would take us, I mean, down to nothing in our capital funds. We can pay for them. The community is, has spent their money. We've saved their money and we're going to spend their money to do the right thing. And that, to me, is the most important thing. Be prudent about what we do. Spend the money wisely, save the money. And when we have it, we can take care of the emergent needs or the big projects. And we can still plan for moving forward with the limited amount of money we have. I don't know what, what else to say. I mean, I think we've done a good job.
Okay, okay. I, I, we've had a thorough discussion on this. And I, I'm urging us to move on because maybe we can look at some of the future projects that are going to come our way that would cause us to try to find even more money for the future. But I would like to move us on to the next couple of topics on the agenda that we should knock out fairly quickly. And that is, I want to ask Josh, do we have an update on board appointments or members? Anybody new going to join us? How are we doing there?
Okay, so no update as it relates to anyone new joining us. We do have two appointed contacts currently with the administration to administer boards and commissions in the mayor's office. And they are the chief of staff, Sammy Graham, as well as administrative specialist, Will Bank, or Bryce Willbanks. I do have this on my agenda for my meeting with the municipal manager this morning, tomorrow morning. And I remain hopeful that they will have a dedicated person for that. It would be beneficial for me, Pete, if, if you, you mentioned a slightly immediate concern that we have now regarding some people's time expiring. If those near-term needs can get in front of me as soon as possible, so I can make sure someone addresses them, that would be appreciated. And Karen, you might have this within your database, identifying where everyone's at. But we have two point of contacts. I hope they have someone dedicated to this cause because it's a big cause area-wide. And that's the update I have.
Okay, thanks, Josh. The next item on the agenda is Peter's Grig Dog Park Status Report. You mentioned that a couple of months back, I think, Josh, in a very positive way. Could you bring us up to date on how we're doing with that project?
Yeah, Karen and I actually met with the consulting team last Friday. And what they are doing right now is they're putting the package together. They have all of their survey done. They do not have Geotech yet. Geotech will be very influential for the subgrade improvements for the parking lot specific. And our consultant, and we're going to hold him to this, they will have a completed concept with completed cost estimates by January 10. And with that, Karen and I plan to take that all in and essentially create a menu that delivers the concept to the community and bring it before this board, because we're going to have some budgetary options. Are we fencing everything? How big is the fencing? How much trails do we have? Things of that nature. But the design that they're working with, in my mind, in Karen's mind, does mitigate the safety concerns that we heard through the public process that came before this body. So our goal is, is by February or March, to have a complete approved package to put out to bid for, for construction in the summer of 2022.
Nice, nice.
And the decision that we will put before this board is, really, we're going to deliver a dog park, but how much are we actually going to spend on it? That's where we'll have a couple of decisions to make.
Questions for the director on that? Hearing none and seeing no hands, I'd like to move on to the next topic on the agenda, Status of Edmonds Lake Acclutina Access Road Proposal. Josh?
Okay, so right now, I'm still waiting for any type of Okay, so right now, I'm still waiting for any type of formal questions. I did pose what I heard at the the previous meeting about, why don't we just turn onto that road? Or onto the utility easement instead of crossing it? The consultant did not have a great answer for me, but if that is the only question, I will get an answer from Acclutna. And I believe it has to do with their destination of where the where they want to land. And as it relates to the future, the the consultant team, as well as Acclutna, is prepared to formally be before this body next January, and they'd like to seek approval. So if any additional questions have been generated, please get those to me as soon as possible, and I can get answers. If we're essentially where we were at before, we have this kind of generic question. I almost certain it will have to be with the, they want to land somewhere. And the alignment lands them where they want to be as it relates to their vision. But that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Brian Fay has a question.
Yeah, I was wondering about funding for that was included for that project, and is that to take advantage of opportunities that arise from Acclutna putting a road in there, or is that actually intended to pay for the road? Which was my understanding was in the Acclutna issue. Thanks.
The the funding that is identified, and this is Karen and John and I having a pulse of the community. With this development happening, having a master plan happening in concert while this development is happening positions us to check in with the community collective to see what the vision is as it relates to that asset, as it relates to retention and management of the existing natural resource. And I think more importantly, any type of future development such as trails that we'd want to see in that park, parking lots associated with this new this new road. It's a good time to start that. Master plans take at least a year to do. They can cost up to a hundred thousand dollars. And being positioned to have development following future road development would be great for the community, so we're not starting from scratch at that point. And that's that is not definitive. That is simply our pulse as public servants of this community.
Follow up, Brian? Brian, did you have a follow up?
No, I think that's awesome. Sounds good. Thank you.
Will?
So I'm just clarifying the, so we've got the hundred thousand dollar master plan, and the five hundred thousand is not for the road itself, but is for park development around that road. Specifically, my question, and I don't know if you want to ask this, but my question to Acclutna is, how does that road tie into the, you know, the area-wide trails plans?
You're assuming it does. Pretty sure that hasn't entered their minds yet, Will.
I don't know if we want to bring that up now, but maybe that's the next discussion.
I do, I do see that road being influential in future trail development. I do absolutely see it being a constraint. But it also could provide some opportunities as well.
John Rada?
Wait, 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 wait. Sorry, sorry to interrupt, but there's someone who had their hand up for quite a while. Phone number five four five four eight one three. Can you identify yourself?
Hi, my name is Rich, and I'm an engineer in Eagle River. I've had been listening to your guys' call for, oh, I don't know, half hour here. And had a few comments. We'll go back to your four hundred thousand dollars that you're allocating from your mill rate every year. And you have been quote-unquote saying, you've been saying, saving this money for the past twenty years to create a savings. However, what you're truly doing is you're overtaxing your citizens. You're not creating a savings because you're not properly budgeting your funding. That's the first point. Now, getting to your point in more recent discussions, we'll start with the dog park and all of everything essentially I have stems with the parks, the muni in general does not do proper project management. So you don't know timeframes. You guys throw things at a whim. When you say you're going to create a geotech, create a construction set in three months. It's going to take you three months just to do drilling. What you need to do is come up with a project manager and come up with realistic budgets for all of your projects. And come up with realistic timeframes because you will never ever meet any of your deadlines the way you're running your parks in Rac and Eagle River. Thank you.
I appreciate you. I appreciate your comments, Rich. Can I get you to spell your last name so I can mark you down as an attendant?
Anderson, A-N-D-E-R-S-O-N.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments.
Okay, John Rada had his hand up. Well, let me come back to you, John.
That kind of took me aside.
It's okay.
The comment about the development of the access into Mure Lake Edmonds Lake Park. We did a lot of work with the Eagle River Nordic Ski Club, Bob Stan and many others about how that might affect development out there. And I think, and Will, you would probably be most closely associated with that. But the goal, I I believe, would be whatever happens with with that access to get up to the Acclutna property is to not interfere with what the plans were, but actually complement what the plans were to create additional access to trail development in that area. So Acclutna might have access going into their property, which we negotiated years ago. But I think we can also gain a lot with trail development, both from the, I'll call it, the east side or the west side. Maybe with parking and trail access and whatever. So I think I think there's a lot of opportunities to do that. My comment.
Yeah, Will, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I I want to clarify, John, that I think that this is an opportunity. I don't think this is a barrier. So
No, I don't either.
Yeah, so I, what I see is the area-wide trails plan calls for an access trail between the Glen Highway and a coastal corridor that that parallels the existing proposal. And so I I feel like I just don't know if we're at that stage in the discussion with Acclutna, or if it's appropriate to bring this up. But if there is a coastal trail corridor, which, you know, may follow the railroad corridor, it doesn't necessarily have to be on Acclutna land. There is a small connection in there where it appears they're gonna be putting the road in. And so I just didn't know if that if that's appropriate to if if that's something that we want to bring up or not at this stage, you know? Because I think we're gonna be planning trails more over the next year.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'll go back forty years and talk about things that I had in discussion with the community about corridors from Anchorage to to Eagle River, Jay Bear. So many different things that have come up over the course of time. At the end of the day, if we can create something that I believe benefits our community. That's the goal. I don't know the answer. But I'm willing to participate, just I, just like I did forty years ago with trying to solve that issue.
We have a have a hand up with a one nine oh seven number. It's a call-in.
That's Rich, and Rich, if you have another question, go ahead. If not, can you pull your hand down? Thank you.
Okay, all right. I think I would like to move on to the, which is kind of gonna tie in with the, how we ended the last discussion about the the trails in Acclutna property, and that's an action item that I I came up with that is tying together some of the conversations we've had at the last three meetings about looking over the horizon at some of the plans that are out there. Now, Will has been advocate of this, and Josh has something to say about it. And we've all had a proposal for a resolution to take a look at. And that's what we're we're going to be talking about next, that draft resolution I sent around for folks to take a look at. Now, I'd like to start with, Will, lay out your basic idea of what we want to accomplish with this resolution.
Um, well, hopefully, as you guys know, I'm passionate about parks and recreation in in our community. And most of my recreation is skiing, hiking, biking, but I I'm fully in support of team sports as well. I played a lot as a kid, and my kids played as well. At the request of my community council, I, they, they, you know, in being fiscally conservative with 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 taxpayer money, they wanted to know what the existing plans were for our community. Plans that have been made in the past before we go forward and start making new plans. And so I I've spent quite a bit of time reading plans, which I'm sure the staff here are very familiar with. The one thing that I saw in in discussions in this community, in this board and in the community is we have really focused on maintaining and developing the current park properties. But the plans also call for connection between those park properties, and and I haven't seen. I feel, you know, I'm sure John and Karen would know about this, but I I just feel like it's been there has not been leadership on that recently, you know, most recently was ten years ago with the Eagle River Green Belt. And that was that was looked, and maybe that's too strong of a word, leadership. I just mean, there's not a point person. I don't see if it's planning or a nonprofit or Parks and Rec to take on that as a priority. And so in reading the documents, I saw that the the Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan from eighty-five, which seems to be the governing document still for for Chugiak Eagle River, calls for Parks and Rec to you know, help foster this connections and green belts as well. And so I wanted to encourage the board to you know, to ask to advise Parks and Rec to take on those connections as a priority. And to kind of be a point to lead this. So whether it's to whether it's taking another look at the coastal trail, which is, which there's quite a bit going on with the long trail, taking another look at Eagle River Green Belt, extending the the bike path. But also for some of these communities, prioritizing the connections to Chugiak State Park. I feel there's been a few times this year where we have lost some, several times this year where we've lost some important parcels. Because we felt that it was the state parks responsibility, and and that particular parcel was not suitable for for a park in itself. The value of the parcel was only the connectivity to the community. And so I I feel that it's in the best interest of the community to preserve those parcels and those connections and to foster those. And and so I think it might take a an action of the board to recommend that we support that as use of taxpayer money, those those connecting pieces in the community. I I don't know if the resolution is ready right now, but I kind of wanted to to put that forward to the board as as a direction for Parks and Rec. I would welcome John's you know, experience with with the decades of where this has gone. I'd also like input from Karen and and Josh over, you know, Karen has a limited budget, you know? We don't want to overwhelm the system, but also I I see that we need some departments, you know, empowered to use taxpayer funds to to develop these plans that have been put in. So that's a lot, but that's where I'm at. That's where I'm at.
Allow me, allow me to just interject with the the resolution that I drafted. Let me read the the basic part of that and then go back to Josh. Be it resolved that the Eagle River Chugiak Parks and Recreation Service Area Board of Supervisors approves and encourages the Department of Cultural and Recreational Services, Parks and Recreation to take responsibility for updating the municipality of Anchorage's recreational trail plans and take a leading role on implementing the recreational trail plans. In other words, the board wants to have you go for it, Josh. Now, do we need this? As AMATS said, I got five hundred grand for you here. We'll take care of it for you. What's what's say you?
I I don't think we need it. I do. I do think that it carries some weight when you're referencing important plans that have already been documented. However, those will already be realized through the the approach. So those will be influential documents for this new recreational trans trails plan. As it relates to convincing the planning director to have Parks and Recreation be lead for this. That convincing has already occurred. They have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they do plan to have us administer it. And in the moment, I foresee this getting kicked off this coming fall. I will dedicate a dedicated planner from the Anchorage Service Area, the new landscape architect hire that we hope to have sometime in the next couple of months from the Eagle River Service Area, as well as a planner that resides currently within the AMATS program at the municipality, leading this front. Again, this is a plan. And it's then up to us as a department, as well as this board, to then allocate dollars to realize this. We can do that now if we have a project that's attainable. So if if there's some, if there's some low hanging fruit out there that we're missing, Will, you know, always use the these meetings and your email to keep us positioned of what's next. But this will just be another plan that has a fresher look. The big difference I see with the output of this plan is all the previous plans that have already been adopted. But really, it's all of the GIS line work that's out there now. And how this will be more, it'll be will be more effective and efficient with our time of putting this together. And all of that GIS data is going to essentially then becomes a living document that we can always look at so we can see these opportunities, especially when we see several dollars on the horizon.
Well, one of the one of the things that that is, I would like to say is that plans are always something necessary to guide where we're going. I was hoping we would would see something or some type of a commitment to build, to actually put a project on the ground to implement. And say, if I was to say, to talk about something I know a little bit about, the Eagle River Green Belt. Now, that was a project that we put a lot of time and energy in and had a whole lot of potential. But it had a hell of a lot of problems, too. And it would meet with tremendous opposition. But maybe if we broke it into smaller pieces and built smaller portions of that trail, the community would all of a sudden go, yeah, this is something we really should have and tie it all together for one day to execute that vision from going from the campground all the way to the nature center on a path that would be safe for everybody to use. And you're gonna have to cross the river. You're gonna have to look river, you're gonna have to look out for the brown bears, and you're gonna have to buy right away. It's, will be a major pain in the ass. But just think of that, being able to get on your bicycle and ride to the nature center. It would be a hell of a tourism draw. By golly, you know, that's, there's a plan for it, but it's too much. That's just too much.
So Pete, where the, where the city would come into this is, you know, that's state park, right? But where the city could come into it is, is where we have these parcels between, you know, the developments and the park. And, 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 and just open up the, I think, open up the scope of Eagle River Parks and Rec to acknowledging that these connecting trails are worth municipal investment, you know? So if we have to, as opposed to, you know, and this is one thing that we ran into this past year that, that I saw is, is there were some parcels that in and of themselves do not have value to Parks and Rec. The only value is connecting to Chugatch State Park. Uh, there was the other parcel where there was a bridge on it, which would have been very expensive, but it was a key parcel. And I feel like it's just, there's a lot of, you know, there's the state park, there's the nonprofits, there, there's Chugyak Eagle River and everyone is, is, we, we haven't, we don't have a lead. And if we, if it, if the advisory board and if Parks and Rec sees this as within the scope of the Parks and Rec department to provide these connecting trails, I think that is, that's something I want the staff to really mull over and to see the implications of, um, and how, a- a- and for the board, because it is, it is changing this, it is, it would be taking on more, but I'm just worried that we don't have anyone in the community that it has the ability beyond Parks and Rec to, to make that happen.
Thanks, Will. John?
Well, I think your comments are really well taken. The challenge is who is going to do this and who's going to fund it? It is a very big undertaking on a kind of a global scope. Um, I dealt with this for many, many years, whether it was the Eagle River Greenbelt, Ram Valley Access, um, dealing with Brad Mickeljohn. I mean, I just, there are so many different things. It's a very, very big undertaking and you have to understand why we might want it, but we have to figure out who's going to do it and who's going to pay for it and it's not be cheap. So.
That's what we want to take on.
I, I understand what you're saying. How would we get there? That's, that's been the question for a long, long time. How do we get there?
Yeah.
And, and Will, sorry, go ahead.
And do we have the money to pay for it?
And, and my question is, and maybe I've misunderstood along the way somewhere too, is Will, um, you're, you're talking about some of the parcels that we've, that have been lost, that would been, have been instrumental in, in access points and things. Um, but those, I, I, am I correct in assuming that those parcels are, are, were, um, HLB, Real Estate Services Parcels and not Parks and Rec parcels of land?
Correct.
Because in our area, for example, of our, our new facility, that property was HLB property. And in our service area, Parks and Rec is required since we're a separate service area from Anchorage. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but HLB is able to transfer properties over to you guys without a cost, so to speak. Whereas in our area, for example, we had to purchase our property from the municipality in order to build upon it. And I'm assuming that this would be the same type, type of situation, is it not, John and Josh, to where if it's an HLB property that's, that's, we're looking at for CSP access or whatever, or trail access, that we would then first have to buy that property from HLB for quite a considerable amount and then build upon it, which is what our building is running us up right now. We had to buy it from ourselves and then come up with the funds to build on top of it as well. And I'm, and I'm just envisioning that we'd have the same, same challenge with, would have to buy the property from, from real estate or HLB in order for it to become park land, in order to then further a development or, or promote, uh, an access of any kind. Am I right? Or is it?
Yes. We have to pay fair market value.
Correct. Um, hey, Josh, do you remember what the fair market value was on that junky little piece I wanted up mountain road?
I think I told you a number and then I heard another number was fourteen grand.
So, I mean, I, I thought it was, I thought it was going up for, I thought it was going up for three thousand five hundred. Like it's, was really.
That's for both, for both properties was the.
Oh, no, that, yeah, the other one I think was like five thousand dollars for this property. And so, but it, you know, but that means, so the issue, and I did bring this to Crystal Kennedy and she did bring it to the assembly, but the issue was, well, who's going to take liability for it and who's going to take that? And so.
Yeah.
I, what, I, I, and then with the Barbara Falls one, that property was offered to Parks and Rec, uh, for free, but it came with like a hundred thousand dollar bridge repair or something like that. I don't know Karen if that was the number. And, 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 and now that's privately owned. A lawyer owned it. And I looked at the BLM, uh, I looked at the BLM easements and that's not an easement. There is not public access through there. Um, you can get public access if you go around that parcel, but not through that parcel. So, um, it, 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 it's just, who, who, how, how can we create a system that will, that can manage or at least take on these lands that has the capacity for public access and liability, you know? And, and I, and I don't see, I haven't found anyone other than us.
Right now, I think we're really looking, if we're looking to create this synergy between multiple land managers, so HLB, MOA Parks, Chugatch State Parks, it's really got to be that perfect storm of how it can all come together. The properties that you've referenced that came up for disposal through HLB, we did take a hard look at all of those. They had problems with them that did not meet the demand. So when I talk about that perfect storm for us to get involved, it has to be a parcel that taxpayers can justify within the service area to develop it as a park. And in, in secondhand, it can also be a parking lot that provides access to Chugatch State Parks. If we're really just developing something for Chugatch State Parks as it relates to access, that really should be Chugatch State Parks. That's why I speak to the perfect storm. Having a parcel that the community wants us to develop, maybe like as a neighborhood use park, something like that, it has the park in there, but then it has that secondary use. So for us to come into play, it needs to have all those things. Chugatch State Park has the opportunity now. They don't have the staff dedicated to look into all these opportunities, minus the Chugatch State Park access plan they created years ago, nor do they have the budget to actually invest and manage and operate these things. So they lack the capital dollars, they lack the operational dollars. So everyone keep paying attention, talk to Karen and I. But for us to get involved, it has to be a perfect scenario. And then we have to test the waters through the process to make sure that's actually supported and it doesn't become an attractive nuisance.
Yeah. I've got some experience with that.
So this is a, this is what I'm, this is where I want you guys to expand your scope. Because I have some documents that, that I'm looking at the old plans that says that, that connection to Chugatch State Park is a community value for the municipality. So I understand, you know, attractive nuisance and some parcels aren't good, but anyway, I'll, I'm just repeating myself. But this is exactly it. What you're saying, Josh, I hear what you're saying and I, and I want, how are we going to step beyond that? And I hear what John's saying, that it becomes this huge, huge thing, but someone's going to have to be that, be able to do that, you know? And some of these parcels are not Chugatch State Park. Some of these, you know, go off into other parts, but they connect muni land to recreational opportunities. Like one side of it is, is private land or muni land, but it's not state land or not like that. So anyway.
Okay, I'm gonna have to interject here, ladies and gentlemen. And I'm gonna have to give John the last word on this before we move on. John, make it brief.
Brian Faye has a hand up too, still.
I think this has been a great conversation. It takes so much time to create the plan. And with Josh and his input, Karen's mind, yours, Pete's, his background, it won't happen overnight. But I think that, I think the idea is great. But it will take time. The question is, who is going to put this all together?
Hmm. Josh?
I don't.
Okay, one last one. Brian Faye?
Take us home, Rex.
I just wanted to say, um, that I, I think that the, the, um, resolution is great. I, I mean, the, the be it resolved part doesn't tell you you have to spend any money on anything or buy any particular parcel. It says, let's get, let's get a plan together and let's, let's, let's have an entity or a way to deal with this stuff. And I think that in itself is of great value. And I think it's something that's been missing for a while. So, um, I definitely support that. And it doesn't, it doesn't commit you to anything. It just says, yeah, we're interested. Thanks.
Okay. Well, let me, let me summarize that by, by saying this, is that we have a resolution, a draft resolution for consideration. And the board has had a chance to look it over. Uh, we have had input from the director who says it may or may not be needed. He's going to have the staff to work on something like this. However, we have board members who, as Brian and Will have, uh, have, have indicated, this is a strong resolution. We want to hold the director responsible for making this happen. Sorry, Josh, I'm, I'm eliminating a whole lot of stuff. But do I hear a motion to approve this resolution? Hearing none.
I, I would like to see us, this worked on a little bit more and address it next month.
Okay, okay. Well, I agree with that. So, uh, Brian, your hand is still up? Okay. Well, uh, there's only one other item on the agenda. And I think we, we've had a heck of a really good conversation tonight about a lot of stuff. And it's just informational. Staffing in Beach Lake Chalet postponed, postponing opening. You got anything to say about that, Karen?
No, we're having it, other than we're having challenges, um, as anticipated with, um, candidates.
Okay.
And people applying. So, um, the ski teams are, are well aware that the chalet will not be open, um, for their start of the season this week and last week. And they're okay with that. They are, had already planned a mitigation plan to operate, um, outdoors in the event that they are full up with wait lists. They're doing so well that, um, they did not really want to come inside this year in case of an outbreak or anything like that that would shut their entire program down by being in the same building at the same time. So they are, um, on board with operating outdoors. We've placed the restrooms at the trailheads in case you guys get questions about the chalet not being open or anything of that nature. We've put, um, porta potties out there and, um, until I have a good candidate, then I'm not planning on, on manning the chalet or opening it at this time. If we, if too much time passes and I still don't get a good applicant, then we would remain closed for the rest of the season because it's not feasible or cost worthy to, or for, for even a, a new hire to bring them in for only a month, for a month and a half, and then, and then you kick them out and terminate them again. So that doesn't, that's not a big draw for anyone. If I can't get someone in now for three to four months, then, um, typically the, we miss that window of opportunity. But I just wanted you guys to be aware in case you get calls or questions or anything of that nature. Um, if I do get a candidate, even one, that's, um, feasible and able, I would probably put them in a position where they're operating on the weekends in order to accommodate the general public, um, rather than the clubs straight up, right? Because, um, you know, the general public sometimes need a place to, to warm up and stuff on the weekends as well. So that's where we would start with a schedule if we find someone and then roll it out into the weekdays to the clubs and such. So I just wanted, um, the board members to be aware of that. And if, in case you get questions or, or why it's not open, or the gates will be open, um, normal schedules, we should be covering those. But, um, as far as the chalet opening at this time, it, um, I have no good candidates. And, um, if you, or if you know of someone, have them apply, please. Love to have them.
Thank you, Karen. Last comment goes to Camilla.
Last comment. Um, I, I, I would be inviting the board to maybe should, we should visit the facilities, you know, when they're open and meet up with the people who are running these amazing places in Eagle River, Chugyak. You know, we have the pool area. I don't know if it's open, but, um, would be nice to basically see the people who are working in these facilities. Just a comment on maybe an invitation for a road trip.
Well, thank you, everybody. Uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Nope. John?
So I want to thank Pete, Josh, and Karen for all the work that has been done on, which I hope has clarified some of the questions on the budget, which was an issue before. And if there are other questions, please send them back to Josh and CC Pete so that we can address them accordingly. I also want to make a comment as a citizen of this community. This has been a very good conversation. I appreciate everybody's involvement, your input, and, um, I've never had a personal agenda about what I did in my former hat. But as a citizen, um, I want this community to be successful. No matter what we do, how we do it, sometimes there's bumps, sometimes there's challenges, but I give credit to all of you for engaging in this, in, in this process. So thank you.
Okay, John.
Thanks, John.
We all mark little field, the budget report, we'll get it to them. Otherwise, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Somebody second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you, everybody.
All right.
Thanks, Josh, John, Karen.
Thanks, everyone. Good discourse this evening.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody.